Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four Barnes-Cunninge our school board meeting to order. First item on our agenda is we can please rise and make some pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Curry, you have anything else?
Uh, nope.
Move on to consent agenda, what covers our two sets of minutes, bills and financial reports. If anybody has any questions there.
Yes. Was there a bus ordered and it will be in expenses by June thirtieth? No? And then I just did some analysis on the lunch expenses in twenty twenty-two total expenses without payroll were hundred thirty-two thousand, next year a hundred forty-four, this year a hundred sixty-nine thousand, and revenues were less than expenditures by four K. We have been talking about the right meeting is what I'm trying to say.
They were off by a moment?
Revenues are less than expenses through April thirtieth by four thousand dollars.
Any other questions on financials or minutes? We'll get ours.
I'll just make one note, I'll see on the column sheets that I made those transfers. At bank forward to other banks, we're still working on the paperwork, so.
Any questions or comments on those? Do you guarantee a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to have a consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Also.
Lee? Roll call, ready, Lindsay.
Eric.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Nothing under patrons, right?
Nope.
Yep, Turner, what do you, Mr. Curry, and superintendent report?
Uh, you saw my report, um, for the football co-op dissolution. Uh, we did send a letter to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Hunt, and Mr. Mathias, is that correct? Is that your board president?
Right.
He's also on there. Activities about, uh, requesting Valley City to reconsider dissolving the co-op. And we got an email this morning that said they moved forward with it, forward with it. They sent it into, must have been approved at their meeting this morning, and sent to high school activities. Uh, with that, when I met with Mr. Hunt, was it last week, uh, when he told me this, uh, doing it, he was explaining he'll have a senior boy next year, so he was talking competitiveness, uh, balance of A, you know, double A to A, and numbers for that, but also looking at, we also looked at our adjusted male numbers because high school activity, I think they moved the numbers, it was one sixty, they moved it to one fifty to make sure a couple of schools got up into that upper division, uh, for that. So this upcoming year, we're fine for twenty twenty-four. Our adjusted male numbers, which go off seven through ten, and so you take your seven through ten numbers, times your free and reduced number, times fifty percent, point five, gives you adjusted number. So for the twenty-four year, we're at one sixty-eight point seven six, which doesn't matter for that, if the number is moving forward. So for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, which this would take in effect now, the number is one fifty-five point two two five. So we're basically five point two two five students above the cutoff number. The following year, and it's a two-year plan, football is going to, the following year, we're at one fifty point two 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 five five. We're point two five five students away from falling within that threshold of being co-op and going into the class A division for that.
Do they still offer the hardship appeal?
So now with the new, like, with the three-class system, there's a, there's a football advisory board or whatever. Talked to Matt Fetch and he said, as long as, in that two-year cycle, if your numbers are above one fifty, they will not move you. Uh, they won't even consider dropping you down, okay? Fine. So adjusted numbers come out again through DPI in July, August. Valley City's going like this enrollment-wise, but the other key factor is if either of our free and reduced numbers percentages go up, our numbers drop. So if that one fifty point two five five drops below that one fifty number, uh, for sure, we are going to go to the football committee, uh, by September fifteenth and ask them, uh, for placement as a co-op for the next two-year cycle, uh, for that, thinking that because we have dropped below that threshold, that they will consider us as a co-op. If they do, then we will have to reapply for co-op status now with Valley City for football.
Isn't there a period that they can withdraw this, dissolve it? They have to, they have to.
They've submitted it, it's, it's not official until the June, whatever board meeting, till approved by High School Activities Association, for that. Right now, they, you know, Valley City, their board has decided to do it, they've sent that information to, uh, High School Activities Association.
But it wouldn't take in fact till a year from June?
Well, for next year's co-op, we're still good, for next year, we're still good. The twenty twenty-four season, we are still co-op. We will be with them, we will be, uh, in that double A division, we will be playing out west, is where our region is now.
Right now, as it says, the co-op ends the day after the football season is fall, right?
Yes. Yeah. For that. So that's why as always, August numbers are very important, uh, moving forward.
You said the we for the hundred fifty-five and a quarter and a hundred fifty and a quarter, whatever, by we, do you mean VC, Valley City and VCN combined?
Correct, yes.
Okay, you got it.
Yep. For that, and their Rob's numbers, they were holding steady, ours fluctuated a little bit from thirty-six to thirty, to thirty-six, I'm talking male enrollment numbers and those grades. Now theirs was steady at one fifty-five, but I, it's tough, yeah, I mean, that's what, right now, what they're looking at. That's projected, everything's projected for that, but their decreasing, their enrollment is going down fairly rapidly. I know he told me, like, in kindergarten next year, and that's kindergarten, but in other ones too, uh, they had a hundred this year, they have forty-three next year. In kindergarten.
Probably.
Yeah, yeah, uh, for that, so that's where they're trending.
But we drop eight or nine from kindergarten next year.
We drop eight or nine for that too, but, you know, but then we're gonna have that now fourth grade, fifth grade class, that's gonna bump it, but.
I'm just saying percentage-wise, so if they drop a hundred to forty, we're dropping twenty-one to thirteen.
Right, so it's, the key is, I mean, if you drop a couple of numbers, but the other key is, if you're free and reduced, if people fill out their forms, and if they do that, that number goes up, because you were talking earlier, well, our revenue is less. And that's possibly because people don't fill out free and reduced.
Mrs. Anderson is going to be a registration for that purpose too. That was part of the plan to help people.
Can we put a little brochure together to say why you need to do this? This isn't just for kids.
I have something.
Just applying, just applying.
Yeah, it doesn't do anything. They have to follow. Right, 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 but there are some people that don't. Yeah, the more that applies, the better, great chances.
I have a chance to ask you, but just worst-case scenario, say the numbers are right, where the co-op will happen.
Okay.
What are options for our kids?
So the option, right, and that's the thing, that the extracurricular committee, that is now the job of the extracurricular committee to come up with those options. Because I'm not gonna go through them all right now. Everybody, I've looked at numbers, I've looked at numbers with area things as far as if we try to do co-ops with area schools, and right now, that moves schools up another division also with that. But that is something that the extracurricular committee has a couple of months, and then whatever after that, to look at other options.
What day will these numbers become actuals and not projected?
August.
These, August, yes. August is when, because you're going off of Eric also, you're going off of your free and reduced numbers from twenty-two, twenty-three that are posted in DPI. So next years will be on, they're always a year behind, because you never know for that next year, that current year, what they are when you're making these decisions, uh, for that.
And if they happen to be lower in August, then, uh, then we would have to reapply, or we could?
Yeah. No, we would still have to reapply for the co-op, because technically, when VC, when the high school activities approves that in June, that's, I mean, the end of it for all intensive purposes right now, for that.
And if it's, who has to accept that co-op? The athletic association?
Yes.
And if the numbers are below and that is reinstated, then it has to stay for three years?
Two.
Two.
The co-op?
He said two.
No, new co-ops, yeah, new co-ops started together.
Why do you drop low?
But if it's only a two-year.
Right, but new.
The football is reassignments, the co-op is three.
When you do co-ops, they're on a three-year basis unless both schools agree. After three years, co-ops just automatically, well, they automatically roll over it anyway, but after three years, much like this case, if one school decides they want out, they can go, they don't need the other school's, uh, blessing to do it.
But if that three-year, if our numbers go above, are we back out in that three-years span, or does that guarantee that the co-op's on for three years?
That's a question I would have to pose, because football's on that two-year cycle, would have to pose to high school activities, to Matt or Justin.
Because it sounds like, say, five years from now, the numbers would probably be lower, but even if it continues, every year's gonna be a moving target till they get down.
The problem is, I mean, and I agree with you, Eric, in five years, it's probably a non-issue, the way the numbers are trending on that side, that combined, free and reduced, whatever, we'd be below that every year after that, but if this doesn't work, we have to figure out something for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, or?
Twenty-five, six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah, for that.
So what did they actually vote to dissolve? Just the football?
Just the football co-op was, was it? Yes. For that, but like I said, I mean, I think the idea is, moving forward, we have to have backup plans. Uh, and that's where that committee, and that's why we have the committees, it's our duty to come up with other options.
The Thunder football, the youth program won't change on.
We control none of that. Uh, you could go any place for youth football, uh, in that sense, so that's not a school decision, I mean.
That would be their club.
Everybody around here could take their kid to some different place for youth football if they want to.
And that club could say they're not accepting, that's what happened a few years back, yes.
They said they, they don't want anything changed on the club's side.
Yeah, for that, and that they haven't asked, or? For that one, so, any other questions on that and how, I guess I'm looking at moving forward with it? Like I said, even before we get to August, I think it's, you could try to come up with, or start looking at other options.
This is what the committee's gonna do.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Have we had any interest in an athletic curriculum position?
We'll get to that later.
Anything under superintendent?
Uh.
You have open positions as your first pull-up point, is there been applications for any of those?
Yeah, I just got a ELA science position today, applicant, for that one, so, and possibly a custodian. Uh, and just, uh, the BCN Education Foundation offered the four grants of two hundred and fifty dollars, and those were given to Dale, Mindy, Krista, and Michaela, earned those grants for this year. That, that's it, Mike.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Curry? Mr. Wilson leave anything, or AD or anything there?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, it's messy, elementary.
Just wrapped up star testing for end of year last week, not this week, but hosted regional science olympiad on Wednesday, May first. Um, our students took second place out of the three teams that were there. Um, we've talked about sending information to some other local schools to get a little bit more competition. Um, we hosted, Mindy was a huge factor in that, but also the other teachers that stepped in to help all the events run smoothly and the teachers who moved spaces so that we could have all the kids down on this end of the building. Uh, lots of great feedback from the other schools that were here. Upcoming events of some professional development days on June fourth, uh, that final NTSS advanced, um, applications, revisiting our structure and systems, and then four through six is the night conference in Bismarck, which there's four, four people going, and it meets, they'll bump their cybersecurity certification levels up, um, from the lowest one to the highest one, and then we do have a group of fifth and sixth graders that are presenting at that conference. So Mrs. Amin has been working diligently with them to try to get the PowerPoint together and be able to practice before we disperse for the year. House points, um, total, I, it was plus four thousand two hundred and thirty, um, this year compared to years past, it was really high. So, um, again, I thank Mrs. Tweet and all the other teachers that helped, um, and six sixth graders who met all the yard goals from first through sixth grade. I'm kind of at that timeframe where I got to see them travel throughout, um, and so they'll be recognized at the elementary awards day. And then, um, the juniors letter, I'll share all students in first through sixth grade that met all those goals, and then I share the most growth. Our title goal is talking about growth overall, so we try to recognize those students that have that growth. Um, Mrs. Bryn was mentioned that there was a bunch of kids who grew over a hundred scales, four points from beginning to the end of the year. She said, one of the most we've had in a while. Um, the Title One data, I shared a few from our meeting, and I think there was a lot of really great discussion. Math acts were brought up again, so, um, we'll be implementing a, um, math fact, or not math fact, but a math, a little math intervention time, um, all together, first through sixth grade, actually kindergarten through sixth grade. So, and then I visited with Mr. Curry a little bit about, um, the math curriculum, so hopefully we can meet as a curriculum committee sometime and go from there. Um, we talked about our school-wide goals, the assess, the state assessment is changing, so it's hard to compare from the state assessment to next year's new assessment, and so we, our goal is to try to figure it out to make sure that seventy percent of our kids are proficient. That seems really low, but we're trying to get a baseline for years coming up. Um, and I know that the state had a few pilot schools to try to help with that baseline, but it's still pretty unclear. I know when we talk about it in our principal meetings. Um, we talked about a, based on survey results, a volunteer interest form, add that back to school night, um, because typically when teachers reach out a parent, the same parents respond quickly to things, so try to, like, get an overall general idea in elementary of what parents are willing to help out with what. So classroom parties or field trips, things like that, um, and then that way we can seek out from the information provided. Maybe they just wanna provide snacks and not come, there's different ways that we can include everybody. Um, yeah, so, that's it. And then the newsletter, just like that.
Can you, any questions? The bits had a report in there, nothing new there, no. Okay, committee, I mean, committee?
There is nothing.
That meant.
Okay, move to election worker approval, you got names we need to approve?
Yep, so I have four workers, Rolene Richards, Mary Plumb, Donna Harstead, Alan Goring, and I have alternates, just in case someone can't make it, of Allison Bryn and Brandon Mueller.
We would need a motion to accept those election workers.
I'll make a motion to accept the election workers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ray, roll call, and you're ready.
Eric.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
There is a resignation letter from Joan Duffy, it says, I am resigning my position, last day will be June twenty-sixth. And you said you had some opening or appellate interest in that?
There's an interest, yeah, in that, so, I'm here with that, and there's nothing, needs to be done with that, it's classified position, it's for your information, please.
Integration plan is next.
Yeah, and if you read the first paragraph, and the, that was sent out by July first of this year, or should be twenty twenty-four. The school district must adopt a cybersecurity graduation requirement or an integration plan, uh, for that, you've seen elementary, uh, Bayles School, very similar, high school is looking at, a lot of it depends upon VOTEC, uh, if they're going to offer any cybersecurity, uh, computer science, so integration in, high school's a little bit of a combination of both, because that's why we did the PD we did this year, getting most of our staff at least level three certified, uh, for that, so that they could integrate it into their classrooms, which some of them already do with artificial intelligence and Minecraft and those things, but also, uh, just being able to offer through VOTEC or whoever else kids that want to take a computer science or cybersecurity class to, to meet those, that requirement. For that, so I don't know if, look through it, if there's any questions you have on it, um, it's something we legally have to do now. I question how long it will be around if we get a governor in, but that's either here or there.
Do you wanna take a look at this and then actually approve it next time, or you wanna approve it now, or what?
If you're willing to approve it right now, we can approve it right now. That if you've looked at it.
So if you're willing to do it now, we would make the motion to approve that.
Motion to approve the BCN computer science and cybersecurity integration plan with a correction to July first, twenty twenty-four, in the first paragraph.
Roll call.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
AD position.
Yeah, the reason why it was on there is Mr. Schaefer and I having no applicants for this position, Mr. Schaefer and I have talked about possibly doing co-AD for this upcoming year, but with, uh, just in lieu of a couple of things that have come up in the last couple of days, uh, we may need to tie this position to one of our open positions as well, so my recommendation is just to table this one right now till June, and we'll go from there with it. I mean, I'll still be probably, in the meantime, working with extracurricular committee and whomever else on stuff that we need to do moving forward.
So you're kind of the interim pointy?
Well, sure, yes, we'll call it that.
Well, just if, if somebody asks a question.
Just not on paper, yes, for that, but yes, very interim, hopefully.
Motion to table the athletic position.
There's a second to table to next one.
I'll second.
And Michelle. Roll call, and you're ready.
Cindy.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Family connection, we go to anything there? Current tech. We'll start with the, we are, will have a A teacher at the center, it looks like right now we've got a verbal, but I don't have anything on paper yet, but it sounds like that will happen. The IT position, we decided they're not to open or fill the IT position, but Eric, who does graphics, is going to take some classes over the summer to do just what Mr. Curry talked about, so he can offer some cybersecurity and that, that would cover all the schools, so they have an option other than distance learning. That's why everybody down there thought there's a better way than going to distance learning, so the center's gonna try to provide that, Eric is on board to take whatever he needs this summer to get that to happen, so he's gonna do some of that stuff in the middle blocks that could probably go online or whatever. So that, that's what we're doing with IT. It wasn't a big, a lot of people's interest to fill the position full-time, so let's.
As in the member schools?
As in the member schools, yes, for coming in.
Would our students be able to access those cyber securities, even though you said it'd be middle blocks where we aren't down there, correct?
We're gonna see how that can work with all the school schedules, yes. That's, it worked, Eric's gonna work on that, and we're gonna work on the scheduling, but the last meeting, we decided we're not gonna fill a full IT position. We're gonna structure Eric over to, we'll have the same blocks in the afternoon that he has with graphics and everything else, same blocks in the morning where Maple Valley and the others come in, be the middle block that he's gonna shift, that he does some things for Valley City right now, that they won't have, but we're rolling into, trying to get this in place.
Okay.
Okay, so, from there, we went to the meetings the other night, we finally got all our zoning and our variances, the city and the water retention, and we got everything okay with the city there on Monday night, as far as I understand.
How do they treat them on zoning? Do they make them bring everything up to turn?
No, this is just zoning for the property, nothing to do with the other yet. Because it had to do with square footage, everything else, we had to get variances for different things, and it was zoned residential yet from years upon, we had to bring everything.
Oh, my.
That's been the hassle, but we went to planning and zoning meeting on Monday. So apparently that's all done, the water retention thing, the city's gonna look at that, because they have, they're gonna look at some of the issues, if you know where the vocational center is, the first storm drain for the, that drains for the vocational centers at Brothers Three. So they're gonna have to do something on their own, the city's gonna look at that, so that got it out of our ballpark of, hopefully, right now, retention. So that's been a work in progress for the last couple of weeks, but that part's done, so now they can try to finish up all the other paperwork that's just waiting to get done. So now that school's coming out, we're going to hire our own, we did asbestos removal bids, and we're gonna do that without going to the general contractor and bid, so we can get that done. So we accepted a bid for twenty thousand, a hundred eighty-five dollars for the asbestos removal that we need to do there before anybody can start. Otherwise, it would go into the bid process, and that's gonna put us another month or so down the road, so soon as school gets out, we're gonna clean, oh, clean out all the rooms, they're gonna come in and do the asbestos removal, so that we approved. Let's say staffing, we did the A and the IT part. Uh, resignation from Kurt Kent down there, which was our bus driver and A for auto. With Valley City taking over their own bus, we don't need the bus-in part that Kent did. So he decided, I'll just resign, so you can go after somebody that could maybe fit a lot of different positions, so we're gonna open up an A position that we could use. An aide position that we could use to shuttle around, even if we need a sub, we can, we've, we've got some criteria of what we're gonna look for, so that's gonna be what we just opened up. So that will cover some of those areas. We had a question and we're still working on homeschool tuition, so. We decided there, if somebody's in the, uh, somebody's homeschooling in the participating school districts. We are not gonna charge back because we're already paying for services there. But we're trying to come up with what kind of tuition if somebody wants to come from Fort Ransom or somebody else, but. We haven't had this issue, but now we've got a lot that are trying to get choice ready and everything else, and they need some of the vocational classes. So they're all more looking to what they can do there, so we're working on that part there too.
Can you go back to that, how does the funding work if they're homeschooled within the districts participating? Who's getting what, you said?
We will not charge, like, cause you're already paying to be a center member.
Oh, cause their tax dollars are already going into the pool.
Cause we're contributing, but if there's not a member of there, we're looking at what that tuition can be, say they're coming from Fort Ransom, that wasn't a participating district. We aren't gonna charge anybody that would be homeschooled here that would go there, so far, that's what, what we're working at. So I think that's about all, we worked on the last couple, and negotiations, we are, I believe done. We're working on some language with Amy DeCook to get it all worked out, we ended up with a complete new salary schedule. That encompasses industry lanes, so, cause we're bringing more in for industry than we probably are through the bachelor's or master's degree, so we built a whole new lane for that. So it's been a month-long process, we've met a couple of times a week down here, but we've, we've got, so it's a whole new schedule, the whole, the whole schedule's completely gone, it's a whole new schedule. And it has the bachelor side, industry lane, and the master side, so it's three different cogs to it. So that should be just finishing up, we'll meet again now after talking to Amy today, just get language in there so everybody's clear. Cause she was helping us work the language as we write the new negotiating agreement, she got back to us today, so we're gonna try to meet the end of this week and get that finished up.
So is it a current lady, current tech, but Amy DeCook as the attorney for North School Board, or as the new math type that?
We started her as, as the attorney.
Okay, cause now she, is she officially now?
Yes.
Not yet.
Yeah, it will be, it will be effective, yeah.
But yes, she's doing it as, cause we hired her as our attorney, we'll look at that. Any other questions on vocation? Okay. Shine Valley Special Ed.
Our regular meeting is not till next week, but we have a special meeting tomorrow to accept the resignation of our current director. We kinda knew this was coming, uh, she's going to, she's been offered and. It, and will accept the Southeast Education Special Ed Unit Assistant Director, and that's where she came from. For that, it gets her closer to home, it gets her into districts that she's, uh, has more knowledge about. So we will accept that tomorrow and be looking for a new director in the next month or whatever it is. Yeah.
Remind me, the pool wasn't out very deep when we left the year.
We have, we have, we had four or five applicants and.
Oh, you didn't have a, okay. It was the pair as in the other stuff that was.
Right, and, but, well, I don't know, we had a good pool, but we're in mid-May, uh, for that, so. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see.
One last thing for our goal, we got a thank you letter to the BCN school board, thank you for the retirement wishes and gifts. Your kindness is greatly appreciated and enjoyed working at North Central, Wimbledon Court, in the BCN, thanks, Joanne.
Nice.
So, our next meeting, June twenty, no, is that the right?
June twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth. Our days after the, after the elections. Okay, well, we are adjourned.